Welcome, everybody. We just got back from our jail tour. We're still in session, so we're going to get right to our agenda. And we have our 9:45 South Central Oregon Fire Management Partnership. Buriki? Is that how you say it? Is that close? Buraki?
Buriki.
Buriki. Welcome. I think you're the lead, at least what we have here, to start it off. Welcome. What do you guys have to say this year?
I'm sure. Well, actually, I only have just a couple of words. Just wanted to kind of introduce myself. I'm Buriki Monahan. And I'm the Public Information Officer for the South Central Oregon Fire Management Partnership. And the reason that we're here today is that we felt it was important to keep our elected officials, as well as the public informed, about the forecast for this year's fire season, some of the preparations that we've made, as well as what we'll be doing to keep everyone safe this year. And then, from a communications perspective, we'll be striving to provide the most accurate and timely information possible, so that everyone can keep their families safe this year. And with that said, in the future, just if you ever have any questions or anything like that about fire operations, please feel free to let me know. And I'll do my best to answer those questions, or get the right personal answers to those questions. And that's really all that I had for my piece. So I just wanted to introduce some of our leadership that's here with us, who will actually be providing the main part of the group. So I'll start off with Barry. Barry Shumirovich is here. He's our...
This is a test for Barry.
Who's that again? Who's that guy?
That's that last name.
Yeah. So he's our inter-agency Fire Management Officer over at this department. And we also have our dedicated inter-agency Fire Management Officers here as well, Bob Carmichael and Eric Narra.
Hey, guys.
Hello.
No, that's fine.
And Todd Forbes is also here with us. He's our Lakeview District Manager for Bureau of Fire Management.
Hey, guys.
Oh. Sorry. He moved on. And Andrew Taylor is here as well, our Fire Management Officer for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
Fred Durian.
Hi.
Also, Mike Ramsey's here, District Ranger for L.A.
Hey, Mike.
I did.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And then Mike Lim, Assistant District Manager, Lakeview District.
Hi.
And did I miss anyone?
Yeah.
Dustin Gustafson. Oh, okay. Yes. Dustin Gustafson, Protection Unit Forester, Lakeview Unit, Oregon Fire Management.
Hi, Dennis.
Good morning.
Anyone else?
Mike Leach.
Okay. Mike Leach is the assistant. Okay. Anyone else on this? I think that's it. And with that said, I believe ODF has somebody providing their portion.
Thank you.
Who's your next? Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you guys today?
Good.
How are you? Good. I didn't really have anything prepared. I think, I imagine Barry, somebody's going to give you a kind of a seasonal update or whatever. For the Department of Forest Street, we're looking at status quo, as we have been the last few years. We have our seven engines scattered about from our Denver Forest Stations, D6, Silver Lake, and Lakeview here. One thing we did do as a district, a little bit different here in Lake County and Lakeview, we, last year, about August, ended up purchasing a new dozer. So we have a water tender that's now called a dozer, where the dozer on, on the local area. So that's been a good addition. Last year was a busy year, but if you use, probably will be got it. So that actually increased our dozer capacity in the district. So the D6 that we had here in Lakeview is now a climate, along with the D5, will increase our footprint a little bit. We've also increased our helicopter from just a jet ranger to a long ranger, a little added capacity there as well. Couple other changes here locally. We're familiar with Kelly Carlson, that worked for us. She retired last year. So our Wildline Fire Supervisor, Kevin Burton, went into the destruction forester position behind Kelly. And then we took Mike here out of dispatch, and he's now in the office running the fire area. Promoted Theresa Thomas up to the Assistant Center Manager position for ODF there at Lacy. And then we hired an individual, Kaylee Starman. She came to us from the State of California Department of Wildlife, Fish and Wildlife, whatever. She's starting to get things figured out.
Good.
Learning experience to operate in dispatch. Those are the changes here locally. You know, statewide level, everything is how it has been. One thing our department is doing, just over the number of years, it's become evident with our longer fire seasons, and fires go a little bit longer and larger, the impacts it's having on our workforce within our department. Need to find a way to add capacity, and we're looking at, rather than each program, whether it's the private forest program, or fire program, or state forest, putting in an ask to the legislature for increased capacity. We are putting in one ask to the legislature this year. That's agency-wide, to look at adding capacity across our entire agency, which will equate to capacity for fire season. So that would be coming up in the legislative session next February, 2009. Hopefully, we'll be able to increase capacity some, and help us on the succession management on our fire tenders of extended attack fire.
So Dustin, on the air tanker fleet with the state, how's, I haven't tracked on how that's going nowadays.
So we still have one air tanker under contract. It's Arrow Air, I believe. Used to be Butler, was bought out. I think Arrow Air, some relationship with Ericson there. It's the DC-7 still, so it's federally guarded. But there is an ability to get our contract to move that to one of their MD-87s, which would be federally guarded. We are looking at that potential maybe for next year or down the road. Good. That's truly all I have for you. Appreciate the time.
I appreciate you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
You guys are okay with it?
Or Drew, do you have anything?
Not really. We're working under that BLM agreement still, so just got our two engines. You can cover us, so.
So before you start, Barry, is it permanent? Eric, you're here now permanent, or how else?
Yeah. I don't have the community anymore.
I'm going to join you in that non-community a little bit.
I was going to ask, maybe you could come up and do the script for us.
All right.
Well, as he comes up, have you hired a new FMO for Lakeview?
No, we have not. Not three, the one. Barry Hanson retired.
Yeah.
And Eric took this job, so we're currently working that process.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
It has been outreach, it has been flown, whether or not there's candidates, so, yeah. Both those positions are currently being at least outreach and announced. So.
Morning.
Morning. So I'm going to give the fuels update for the BLM, U.S. Fish and Wildlife and the Forest Service. And it'll just be a synopsis of what we've accomplished over the past year, both this last fall through the winter and into the spring. So we'll start off on the BLM and Forest Service, or excuse me, Fish and Wildlife side, and with the prescribed fire for both agencies together, accomplished a little over 6,000 acres of juniper piloting mainly, some metal enhancement burning and other types. And then, on the mechanical side, once again, both agencies accomplished 5,000 acres of mechanical cutting. And once again, that's mainly juniper.
On the Fish and Wildlife, it's mainly been on the Heart Mountain Estuadment.
Yep.
Where they've been cutting and finishing up that project here shortly, isn't it?
Poker gym's pretty much done then.
Yeah.
And then on the BLM, heading out in the Silver Lake area, and hoping to get a little more money from the regional state office on that project, and doing more work out there. Still about 10,000 acres of mechanical will be done for the BLM. And Matt Haskins is putting together those contracts, and he's diligently at getting some of that work done on Lake County side. And Justin Pyle is the fuel specialist over on the Clamath County side, and also skills in some contract work. So with the Forest Service, we've had a good, what I consider a good spring this year for prescribed fire activities. Including last fall, we're up over 13,000 acres of prescribed fire activities across the forest. Majority of that has been burned in L.A. District, and also Winter Rim and Lakeview District. And another good project that we've accomplished this year is up in Shamalt, the town site of Lurier or Shamalt, burning right around that community. So that was a finish this spring as well. So a lot of good work that all those units are doing, and our prescribed fire acres are going up a little bit, which is good compared to what we've done in the previous years. And still trying to build that capacity, and build it back up, and more industrial hit on the inter-agency, and looking at workforces, and how do we extend those workforces out into the shoulder seasons where they're not just working in fire. So as an example, we've had Oregon Department of Forestry employees out there on prescribed fire. We did a cooperative agency agreement, so that, I mean, put some money into it from the Forest Service, and we've had both the Clamath Unit and Lake Unit and ODF employees out there participating in our prescribed fire activities. And then in the Silver Lake area, we've had the Nature Conservancy, a joint project with the Nature Conservancy as well. So we're looking at building that capacity up a little bit more, and getting our prescribed fire acres on the ground. Trying to get a few more acres than what we've had in the last few years. And I think this spring has been quite the success story on that. Hand pile burning, we've accomplished over 8,000 acres of hand piles across the forest this year. We've had quite the stockpile of piles within the Lakeview Stewardship Unit, and had the opportunity to get out there and get some of those hand piles and machine piles burnt from the last winter, and into, a little bit into this early spring as well. I'm sure you guys have seen the smoke, and I'll point along on that. And talking of smoke, that's still one of our limiting factors, is the non-abatement area of these lakes, ours, Lakeview, and also in the Clamath Basin as well. The state of Oregon, new regulations should be, if they're not signed, should be signed by the middle of this month. And some of what would have been considered a intrusion previously, would now just be considered a nuisance, the one hour limitations, the one hour, 24 hours, still there, and still is a limiting factor. So hopefully, this will help us out as far as that intrusion report, and/or limiting us for prescribed fire activities, and also for the communities of Lakeview and Clamath Falls, as far as the smoke limitations that ODF has put on us. So, into my report, and yes, there's questions from you guys.
Just a few, Eric. Between the interior and the ag agencies, where are we at relative to meeting targets?
Within, so locally, we've met and exceeded targets, both on the interior side and the Forest Service side. And likewise, at the state level, we've exceeded targets. On the Forest Service side, we'll never worry that we're not going to meet the targets that were assigned to us within the region, but I think across the Pacific Northwest, we had to get current season this spring. So exceeded those targets, the last report I had.
Good. So when you talk about capacities, just really quickly, are you finding that you're limited in some of the areas you'd like to go and apply the prescribed fire because of the lack of financial resources to do the necessary pre-treatment? And those conditions are such that you wouldn't meet target, you wouldn't be able to get through a lot of those stands without some dollar spend on pre-treatment in those areas? Is that a concern at all?
Dan, I think into the future, it's going to be a concern. Presently, we are getting quite a bit of funding, either through our CFLRA, or the Joint Chiefs, within the stewardship area. But both of those are due to expire within, you know, we have funding next year, but after next year, are we going to have those additional investments coming to the forest? That's up to debate, right? And so, yeah, without those mechanical pre-treatments, those non-commercial findings that have happened, and hand piling, a lot of hand pile, which has helped us increase our capacity in under burning, and without that financial investment on the mechanical side, being able to increase the capacity on the prescribed fireside, it's going to be limiting. So we're still, you know, we have our hands out, we're looking for grants, opportunities anywhere we can, on both the interior agencies and the Forest Service.
So on the interior, and I'll stop, because I know we're taking quite a bit of time here, but I'm just curious now, the Red Rocks ago, on the interior side, a lot of those juniper stands aren't the best place to go gather them up and ship them on site, but the federal government side, they don't have the RINs credit available. You know, my understanding, of course, the company will be working with the agencies going forward, but my understanding is, we're going to have a great opportunity to get the thing, to get the treatment at no cost, just making it available, essentially. So is there any thought in future planning about?
We haven't heard of it.
Okay. Yeah.
That was my question, too. Quite a great tool coming in, and that might make it worth it here, for much bigger areas.
You might have more treatment.
Right. And without the credits, I don't know what that capacity is.
They think that'll eventually happen, but it's a couple of years out. But yes, Mike.
So where we left that discussion with Red Rock a couple of years ago was, we weren't going to start doing anything special or different until they started building. Because we didn't want to end up with the same situation we had with the biomass.
The Viva Drol.
Well, and Mike, with that, I think it's going to be important for you folks to not only not do something until it's being billed or billed, but until you have surety that the acres you used to use that way, and plan for the removal by them, are actually going to be removed, because the RINs credit is a big stigma right now.
So they had said they could use material off of federal land for heating the chamber.
Yeah.
But not putting in the chamber.
I think what they'll do is, in all the discussions I've had with Jeff, is target probably about 5% of their total ship needs annually off federal lands right now, until they get the RINs credit, and then they're going to work with you folks completely to get as much as they can engineered here.
We'll help them.
Yep.
I would definitely be of help.
Yes. Thanks, Barry. Glad you're here.
So Bob will give the federal update on resources real quick.
How are you doing on your type?
We're working on it.
We'll do a quick operational, if you don't mind all, and just include the entire SCAP pump stuff with the ODF and Fish and Park and everything. Kind of rolls off my tongue easier that way. So our capacity's going to be almost the same as past years. Engine-wise, instead of 48, we'll have 46 engines within South Central Oregon this year, mostly due to challenges within the BLM to hire some leadership positions on the engines. We're going to show some of the strength of our partnership, I believe, this year, though. In fact, we may be staffing 48, because we, you know, we're going to leverage some other ways to try to get some leadership in, to try to make them operational. We have the bodies and the firefighters, we have the production, we're going to see what we can do on the engines there. But that's still a very good number, 46 operational. Aircraft, you kind of heard Dustin talked about an increased capacity of their Type-3 shipped out of Clamath Falls, but they'll also, again, this summer, I think, have a Type-2 over there. The Type-2 helicopter that's under exclusive use contract was here yesterday, started this weekend, and blew on fire yesterday, actually. So that crew's on, and it's larger in numbers than it's ever been on that crew. I think we're going to have three hand crews that are like the type, you know, like 10-person size. We'll have a crew that's out there, and has been, in Clamath Unit at ODF, too, that helps and conform as a crew there, as well as L.A., Lakeview. We have Buena Imma hotshot crew out of Clamath Falls, and then we have our veteran crew out of Clamath Falls as well. We're still waiting on a decision letter being sent to the National Office on their Type-1 status, which we've been pushing for a while, but they're still here. Seat planes come on. We're going to have our first seat plane out here at the Lakeview Airport, probably on the 11th this month. And then as the season progresses through, we will compete for areas that don't need it as much, and you might see quite a few more there. I think we have three primary fire dozers within the agencies, which we could certainly reach out, get a lot more heavier equipment than that, but those are ones that are on call every day, as well as about three water tenders. So we do have some leadership positions you talked about, that we're working on filling. The BLM filled the AFMO position behind Brent Meisinger with Trent Welkey. And so now they have a fire operations supervisor that needed filling behind Trent. And then we're working on three district FMOs, the two not only Lakeview, but then we also have a Shamalt that's flying and advertising on the same pattern and timeline. So what did we miss as far as resources? I don't know. But I do know that you're familiar with the Rangeland Fire Protection Associations, and we have a new one with the High Desert Association. So corporate capacity within our counties is getting better, even more so with them at it. And I'm sure that's going to be a great group to work with, knowing the people who are involved there with that. And we've already had a district that worked with those folks, so I think that's going to be an added bonus. Which only leaves a little bit of Lake County lands that has no protection. There's some of that in Alphalight area, and stuff like that, which nobody claims protection for, but mostly, all the rest is.
Good.
Questions?
I have a couple, as you were speeding right through there.
We're trying to save time, because I know Barry's going to be terrible.
He is. I don't want to...
Did I miss anything? Detection cameras.
Oh.
We're going to have, what, four tried this year?
Yeah.
We already got two?
Yes.
So, yeah, and we might have, the one on Lake County that might go first is Drake's. You want to speak to it?
Grizzly.
Go ahead.
So, the Clamath Forest Protective Association, through our budget, has kind of put some seed money into some detection cameras over the last couple of years. Started with the mountaintop out of Clamath, Chase lookout, I believe, was the first one. And then it's just expanded to Hogback, right out of Clamath Falls there. We're looking at expanding that eastward to Grizzly being the first detection camera here, and then hopefully getting over to Vignanix out of L.A. And then hopefully, that's the backbone for the system that can, that we can expand out and hit Drake's Peak, and start heading a little bit further north and around with those in subsequent years. You know, I just mentioned in Grizzly, that one became possible pretty easily from the help of the Forest Service. They were putting up a new tower on Grizzly, and we're in the process of acquiring that tower from the Forest Service, their old tower. So that will be part of the backbone for the camera system. Right now, the detection center has, how many?
We've got six up, we'll have 12 here momentarily.
So there's, yeah, the 12 monitors in the office in Clamath Falls, still looking at maybe more permanent location for a detection center, as that system continues to expand.
So just a couple of quick questions on that. When we talk about detection center, first, Dennis arrived a little late.
Sorry I'm late.
So that everyone knows, he's here with Dennis Lee. Is that the only place, is what you're saying, that's the only place you can view the cameras, what they're viewing, or are they going to be capable of viewing them in pickups?
So the detection center will have somebody sitting in there, and there's a software that these cameras feed all their images to, and the software picks up anomalies, like smoke and sound as a alarm. And somebody in the detection center will look at the images and verify whether it is or not, and then make the report to our dispatch center, just as if it was a lookout on a mountaintop. Now, it's all internet-based, so I sit in my office, can log into it and see the images that the cameras are taking. I don't know that I will have the capacity in my office, though, to actually take control of those cameras and move them.
Right.
Where the detection center will be able to do that. So I think in each, each mountaintop will have two cameras, one that'll continue doing its view around landscape, the other one, somebody in the center can take control of it, and if there is a smoke, point it right at that fire and continue to watch that as the fire progresses.
So this would be a great place for the detection center and those jobs here in Lake County, so how do we make that happen?
Space.
There's a few different detection systems at play. We're trying to partner and leverage on not only the same system that ODF is using right now, where we can, and we're also looking at, there's another camera system out there. Bottom line for us, there is going to be innovation in detection, even if satellite warrant for future, and things like that. We will still have our detection platform planes and lookout stuff. We'll have an ODF detection platform at Clamath. We'll bring on one here in Lakeview. We'll have our air attack platform at Clamath as well. So all those historic things will be in place, and we're just trying to evolve and move into some future things there.
So Bob, I got a ton of questions, but I'm only going to ask one more. So we talked about detection drones.
Yep. We, on this unit, mostly born from the BLM at this point, have six, with six pilots, which is about six or seven more than most areas. I say that we've been pretty innovative in that. Several with the crew, the veteran crew, because they already had established pilots that were used to flying them, and then we got certification for them to do so, but we also have some on the Lakeview resource area, with Theo, a person within the engine organization, and others. We'll probably see more use of that, too, not only just in the mapping and the visual things to help inform decisions, decision-making, but I think some of the newer ones that are going to come online and be approved can also do things as far as be that communication site that stays in the sky, providing those IR maps at night, a lot of other technology things that might, you know. But they are considered aircraft, according to FAA, thus they have to be carded, and you have to have a approved and certified pilots, just like if you're a flying assessment.
Then we'll have one on the Clamath Lake District as well this year.
And those just, I guess I got another question. You don't get, have real-time information, do you? You don't get real time information, do you?
Depends on what you've set up for your software system and how to read, but no, generally they come back, and then the ones we have right now, they come back and you download that. If you have all that stuff onsite where you can download and share, then you can get it pretty real time. If you aren't set up that way for some other places or units, depending on where they're used, sometimes it takes a while to get that to the customer that really wants to see the IR images or visual or whatever.
Thank you.
Yep.
How the windy guy?
I'll be quick.
Thirty seconds.
Thirteen minutes. Depends on how many questions Dan has.
I'll go through the canned stuff here first, we'll look at this fire season outlook. You can see the drought monitor, it's not looking very good for Lake County and Clamath County. You can see there, as of May twenty-ninth, we're already slightly below normal, and then as, as our season through, good for June, we drought persists and gets more extreme, especially all the way in the southeast Oregon. Really bullseye there in Oregon. And I think a lot of that's due to our lack of snow back through the summer. Good rain, and we've got a pretty good grass crop in a lot of different places down there. Okay, if you go ahead and flip then to the page, the back page there, kind of see the, our potential outlook. Right now, things are calm in Oregon, Washington, most of Northern California, but then as you get into July, we turn red, and we stay red for most of the summer. Okay? So that's something we're certainly going to have to keep in mind. The back page here then just kind of shows temperature and preset probability, and as you see, I think there's going to be a point here where it's going to turn hot and dry. So we're going to be in for another long summer, yeah. That's what's the current prediction. If I knew more about that, I would be in a different color.
I'm surprised, I'm not surprised, I'm curious on the drought monitor, you know, how much of an impact of these last number of weeks, some of these major rains have had. I know drought's more major more than just in the go time event.
That's right.
Seems like we've gotten, I know we'll recover from it as far as drying out, but we've got some pretty good moisture, pretty widespread.
Yeah.
Our rock stations, you know, some got over two inches of rain, a lot of them got around one point seven here locally, one point eight, things like that. I know at my property, my personal property, it's already getting dry.
Yeah.
And it's so dim quick, so, yeah. The other thing I wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about, you saw my email about the Clamath and Medford tanker base analysis. We're real happy to see that. We're going to continue to have both of them for at least the next fifteen years, and so we feel that there's a good value in keeping both tanker bases. And the Clamath tanker base in particular is very important, especially as it reaches out further to the east here, and we'll just add another thirty minutes plus to our trip to go to Medford, so very pleased with the result. I know that when the review committee came to Clamath Falls and looked at the tanker base, they were very impressed with how clean it was, how functional it was, the capacity it had, the fuel capacity it had, working with the National Guard there, things like that, so they got, we got pretty good feels on that too. I felt pretty good after they cleaned for their site visit, but we're okay, but didn't know for sure, you know, so. We'll see how things go in the future there. And the report did talk about, you know, potentially having to build agencies for services, you know, because right now the Forest Service is paying for everything. And Region Five has also got quite a bit of, they're using both Medford and Clamath right now. But let's see how that works, see if, see how the, how to pay for it continues, so. One of the things that I just am really pleased about is our partnerships with ODF and with the federal agencies and whatnot. Again, we had a very successful prescribed fire season. We had both Clamath and Lake units helping out there on, on federal ground doing prescribed fire. We've gone out and needs to help pay for them now on those burns, and I think that it's only going to lead to more opportunity where if there is a landowner that's potentially looking to maybe partner in with a prescribed park next to federal ground that we're doing, we may be able to incorporate it more and have, have those folks out there and that part is, really super excited about that. I think ODF can say that we're getting more people skilled and qualified in some of those prescribed fire qualifications, and so... And then also the other big achievement is the, you know, the past Buick timber sale there by the cover block, you know, and ODF's role in that has been tremendous with Good Neighbor Authority, so to really push a Good Neighbor Authority, we're hoping to have more projects out there in the future that involve Oregon from the forest tree, so always looking for, can be there. The detection camera thing, we covered that, but you know, Oregon, Washington has put in for a request for detection cameras on federal lands. We're going to look to try to get some of those cameras purchased. We'll have some here in the county as well, as well as part of the county, but our goal is to get the old Clamath Falls fire centers to, that is a detection center, and, you know, it's only going to require a couple people to be there, and so we're pretty happy about that. We'll just see, that's our, our goal, one of our goals to try to get going, so. We got the facility, and we're not really using the facility very much anymore, so. With that, do you have other questions?
I have a question, I'm curious. Looking at, you know, a lot of the concern is landowners, defensible space and all that. Is there any representative from the Forest Service BLM, watch the planning, our planning department and as their development, whether it's residential or solar or anything, close to federal lands, and come to those meetings to express that thought, the, 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 the defensible space?
Yeah.
I'm not aware of anybody going to the planning meetings, maybe Ramsey might know, but I'm not aware of anybody. I don't know that we've ever been asked either.
Yeah, well, I just sitting here thinking about it, if there's more and more people wanting their ten acres out in the middle place, plus there's quite a bit of private land out within the forest BLM, and it'd just be an opportunity to voice an opinion when somebody's looking for a conditional use permit or whatever, you know, if you're going to be out here, those are some things that you might want to consider. It's not a mandatory thing or anything like that, but just I've always been...
I know through our media outlets, you know, here on the radio all the time, the commercials about the pencil space and being prepared for the fires.
Well, and I think to Commissioner Winters' point, and that's something that we, you hit the wall on ahead, Barry once said, maybe we haven't been invited, that perhaps in the future, when the planning director and commissioner are legitimate, those kind of areas, because we helped that through Title III, the Community Wildfire Protection process, to talk about that, to incorporate it, but maybe we need to get the agency on the mailing list for those particular potential conditional uses, because then we can make it a requirement of the condition of use.
Just one more of those partnerships.
So I know on the, the, one of the forms through the planning department that we get questioned about all the time is there's a box, are you in a wildfire hazard area, I think is what it's called, and that means, is it within Oregon Department of Forestry's Fire Protection District? And so we field a lot of those calls from, from applicants that are going through the planning department, and he's answering that question. I'm on the mailing list, Darwin sends me all the conditional use permit applications via email, there's once in a while I'll comment to him via email, but there is room that we probably could do a little bit better ourselves to voice, or kind of put together some guidelines that are more helpful for people building those damn structures out there.
I guess I was just going to clarify, and I'm glad Dustin spoke out, I, from a federal standpoint, I start getting really nervous as a federal manager when I start requiring things of private landowners that are not on federal land, and so I would think the more appropriate agency would be the agency that protects those lands from a fire standpoint, to be the one that enters into those conversations. I mean, I'm certainly not opposed to having a conversation, but the only time we get notified from a federal standpoint from a private landowners requesting a conditional use permit is when a portion of that either butts up directly against BLM lands or requires access through BLM lands. So I guess my point is, is I get a little bit nervous if I'm trying to tell somebody what to do with their private land from a, whatever land they understand.
I wasn't going there, I was more of an educational part, sure, the timing side, because I'm very pro development and all that, but if you have somebody that, they need to know if they've ordered federal lands and they start a fire, they're, they're in trouble.
Well, and that's the, the point I think too, you make a great point about the federal lands versus the private lands that have state protection, but it's a two-way street. I mean, for years now, the federal government has been spending a great deal of its resources protecting those private, not lands necessarily, but homeowners with the wooey, and so it is a, you know, it's a communication and a two-way street, and I'm sure the state is the appropriate agency to actually put the requirements on a conditional use or suggest them, so.
But it sounds like you do get notified. I didn't, I, if, if they're adjacent, yeah. Darwin's really good about making sure those notifications go out. Two minutes, okay? Are you done? I have, Dan, any other questions? We're ready for fire season, we don't know what it'll bring, but, you know, listening to some of the other agencies across the state and how they're still working with partnerships and whatnot, I'm very proud to be part of South Central Oregon and the partnership that we have here with the fire agencies in Oregon, so it's great.
Well, just, just for the, like, since we give a minute, for the record or camera or whatever, the reputation's, you know, pretty widespread across the nation, it's still, folks have always said on the phone, our leadership against them, this area is pointed to, you know, I have to be careful, I was representing the national interest, but this area is pointed to a great deal as far as its work, its partnerships, its go-to, get it done as an inter-agency fashion and all the agencies, so a lot of kudos to you guys, gallons and all that you do, from the land management to the firefight and all the treatments that you do out there. And with that said, I'm going to ask you one really quick question, not, not about the past history, but when I look at this fire severity map, I'm curious, I know the state, I was talking to Dennis the other night about this, I know you just declared fire season affected the eighth, I think.
It's spreading.
But as it relates to some of the restrictions on non-state protected lands, given this map, I know you folks have always been good about trying to allow, because there's multiple use on these federal lands, as much enjoyment as possible up until the drop date, so I don't know if there's any consideration for holding off through June, I have a personal interest in this too, I'll divulge that, and holding off on some of the restrictions for the federal land uses out there. Bob's raising his hand, he's going to tell me.
Yeah, yeah, you know, take case by case for the law, so. We will, we will completely have our discussions, we will look at science, look to science for when those times suggest that it is not safe for you, others, or public users, or even ourselves, to engage in certain activities because of fire danger, and by going, that's when it's going to be. We, we have to hold to that, using science, using dialogue and discussions about when it is okay and safe for themselves, others, and anybody to be out there doing that, because that's what we're caring about, and if it falls at a certain time this year because we turn hot and dry, that's when it falls, but we'll continue to do that. And try to inform as much advance notice as possible, like we do when we know there's a decision, and on the other side of that, as, as conditions and situations are providing relief or are backing out of that fire danger, we'll try to do those as timely as possible because we do want people to use those lengths.
Is there a specific location we need to have some added patrols?
There would not be, but it's interesting, Bob says science both for the fire restrictions as well as moving in and out. You all cover, I don't know how many millions of acres.
Almost ten thousand.
And science unfortunately cannot cover each area relative, you know, the reality is, when you hit a certain threshold, you go into a restriction, and in certain parts, the science does appear that out.
Sometimes the east side of South Central Oregon and west side don't always coincide.
Exactly.
But we look at the science and we try to make the best decision we can, so we don't send confusing messages to the public.
Copy that, thank you.
They'll have through June. They'll have through June.
Very quickly. On average, it's going to be June safe.
As always, thank you and everybody, you know, men and women out there that help keep everybody safe, keep our forest from burning up, appreciate it very much, all the way down. Every year we let you know that, a lot of people, a lot of public in their life, file goes into it, but thank you guys very much.
Great, great updates.
Yes, appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
And you're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting.
I'll go get a drink, Bob.
Yeah. All right, we'll go with our ten thirty item, Jason, County Park of Indian Territory Area.
How's it going this morning, Jason?
Morning, Jason.
Morning, Jason.
Do you have cable?
Sure.
This is a little trouble. Oh, the remote not working?
No, it's yours. No nerves last year.
We have you down for a half an hour, Jason, is that enough time?
Oh, that's plenty, I'm sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Coming back, Charlie?
Okay. You heard this, that's our name today, Jack?
That's it. Just for fun, I'm glad you're here.
Good to see you, Jack.
Yeah, you do.
Do we have something here from Jason? I did not have any cameras, we're quick. Hopefully, I'll quick, maybe this works.
Yeah.
This works.
So is that where you have lunch, Jason?
Mm-hmm.
Right there.
There it is.
Yeah, it's a good lunch.
Jason, what's your final?
Should be, I'll ask, I'll ask, go on, why don't we just do some of the fast things for our integral fast falls. Jason's waiting for that fire up.
Okay.
So I want to go on our agenda, order them a little temporary and non-proper application. I signed that on the second page there, just consensus that let that be a dentist. That was taken care of, that's our annual application. Get that one out of the way tomorrow. I'd like to have support to appoint two vacancies to the SOAC South Central Oregon Area Committee on Transportation. Lake County has two vacancies, one on industry, and the recommendation will be Bobby Hickey, and the other one will be Member at Large, and that would be Marie Tucker. Just to give an update, and we'll finalize that tomorrow. Let me see here, what else can we get off here real fast? on the second page there, just consensus that let that be a dentist. That was taken care of. That's our annual application. Get that one out of the way tomorrow. I'd like to have support to appoint two vacancies to the SUGA, South Central Oregon Area Committee on Transportation. Lake County has two vacancies, one on industry, and the recommendation will be Bobby Hickey, and the other one will be Member at Large, and that would be Marie Tucker. Just to give an update. Finalize that tomorrow. Let me see here, what else can we get off here real fast? I think that's just about it.
Okay.
Oh, where I can go, I'm ready to go. Does this one work too?
Sure.
Roll over to the slideshow.
Camera talk.
Slideshow right there.
All right. So those of you that don't know me, I'm Jason Agar, Team Program Coordinator for Lake County Cooperative Weed Management Area, or CMA. Brought with us today, Grace Askins. She's a cooperative BLM. And John Muir, the Order Department of Fish and Wildlife.
John's not in.
He's been there.
We're not used to him being that quiet.
Oh, just wait. I don't think anyone's ever said John's like a root for. So we're gonna get a quick update on what we've been doing for, as positive, Lake County and as the CMA. And kind of what we've done for the last three or four years since I've been here and kind of go with you, look at before versus where we are now. So we partner with pretty much virtually every agency, of course. I don't think there's one that I can name of in Lake County that we don't partner with. ODF's not up there, but Water Street Council, BLM Forest Service, obviously there's a county. So we try to bring them in. And we're kind of, what we do is, we provide a bridge between federal agency and private owners. Try to find outside funding to treat private lands so that kind of like LFSI, kind of combining everybody together, trying to get everybody in the same room, trying to come up with a holistic approach to noxious weed control. So before, this is 2014, earlier, before I came on, we had five or six grants a year. Did education mostly as it pertained to grants, just because funding restrictions. Anyway, it's Seasonal Coordinator, which happened to be Grace before me. Now, we have full-time coordinator myself. We just hired an assistant coordinator about two weeks ago today. We help the county with their noxious weed control on industrial, railroad, and some of the other county lands. We do the education. We do outdoor schools. We try to provide all the recertification credits to maintain your pesticide application license. Before, you'd have to go to Clamath or Shoots County to get that sort of thing. Do equipment loans. Before, we did not have enough applicators to cover everything, so we loaned out sprayers, slipping tanks, backpacks. We work with most of the school districts. District seven, near Lakeview, is that right, Jack? Yep. Actually, I had a call a week ago about doing some stuff at City Farm, with the action with Grace as well. Aiden Alpash, Paisley. Lot of one-on-one landowner stuff. We're also the point of contact for the Oregon invasive species hotline. So if someone finds invasive species, albeit noxious weeds or animals such as nutria, that was a big one that I'm having trouble with in the valley, I guess, that comes back to us and we field those calls. We represent Lake County with the Oregon County Weed Management Association. And I'm also a board member for the Oregon Cooperative Weed Management Area. So in 2014, when I came on, that's when the county started helping fund this position. We're kind of hovering around $200,000. And then using the leverage, or using county funds as leverage for grant applications, we've increased that by $400,000 over the last four years. I can't reiterate enough that the county leveraging those dollars is what puts us over the top. When we applied for grants, they let us cooperate with BLM Forest Service. And the county being part of that list, that is a huge boon for us. Even though it's a small percentage of our budget, just having the county on board is a big deal. And like this year, we're just shy of $600,000. That's jobs in the county, I mean. That's a big deal. Not only jobs in the county, but that's also going helping the wildlife habitat, helping producers be more productive.
It's helping the lands become more valuable for the country and so on.
Yeah. We do a lot of post-fire stuff, not a lot of post-fire, some post-fire stuff. You know, annual grasses is a big deal, going back to the fire thing, just trying to prevent that cycle from happening over and over again, so. You see, Lake County, what you give us is just 3%, but that is what it's done for us. It's been a huge deal. Obviously, the BLM and the Forest Service are big chunks, but they're also big players in the county. Just a quick breakdown of what those dollars look like. So, yeah, mostly it's Forest Service, BLM. But Oregon Department of Ag has been a big player as well. They kind of come through every year for us. They have a grant program we apply for, we get three or four grants, pretty sizable grants from them every year. So just dive into what projects we've been working on this year. Been working in Warner Valley for the perennial pepper weed. This is probably our last year or second last year on that project. It's been going on for a very long time, 2009 maybe?
This is a tree. I'm working pretty well with them.
Yes and no. Places it is, places it's not.
The toughest weed diversity.
Yeah. Crump Lake, so DSL manages all that area. And then our annual budget for us has been like $2,000. So it doesn't get us very far. Especially when that lake was low last couple of years, it was, we felt well short of what we needed to do. And this provides a huge seat bay that goes into the Warner Valley.
It just goes in the water, doesn't it?
Yeah, it just gets carried on.
Goes all the way out.
And we'll hit on how we've been combating that problem here a little bit. We've also been working on our Spotted Act weed. The BLM has graciously funded us to form a collaborative to work with Modoc County and Clamath County. And we're trying to get into Washita County a little bit up here in this corner that affects us. Been working on a collaborative, trying to share more information, trying to come up with a more holistic approach. We know that it's coming up the corridors, like 395, 97, and then across the border here, like a very point fire. We're seeing a lot more of it. And if you go into California very far, it's a huge problem. It's pretty bad.
Fifty feet.
Yeah, yeah.
It's unbelievable.
It's unbelievable.
Unbelievable.
So then we also been working on our Spotted Act weed. Shoots County has a pretty good population of Spotted Act weed. And it's pushing into Christmas Valley, which is a picture of it right there by the gas station. With the OHV trails that pass through, Two and a Half Brothers, that's a, that's a big fear of mine is that they'll escape out of that. So survey is kind of a big deal. And then our EDRR program, Early Detection Rapid Response, that's our program for small populations, any species, or stuff that's new. It's just yellow star thistle. We found some leafy spurs last year above Paisley. Trying to have a venue or an avenue to jump on those problems before they start.
The yellow star thistle, I haven't seen much of it here. I hear it's coming up the railroad tracks.
There's a little bit there. Mostly, it's on the west side of the valley here. And then there's a little bit above Paisley. I think we'll get the stuff on the west side with depth this year.
So Jason, I don't know how to describe it, I could, I wasn't trying to think of it, but the weed, the little round
Puncture vine?
Puncture vine, yeah. Seems to be, and it's not just the vine one, but it's just the little plants growing. Head out and they've got the little round, multiple puncture. It seems like it's spreading like crazy.
It is spreading like crazy. And actually, City of Paisley have been working with them to do, they're streets. But, because essentially we have no authority unless somebody asks us to go help them, you know, we'll do everything they say City of Paisley wants to do. City or town Paisley?
City of Paisley. Yeah, the town is like, it's just a town. We're a city of Paisley.
So, but there's people that don't want us to, and then, so as soon as we do something good, it just kind of keeps coming back. So been constantly chasing it. And actually had a person that does metering for the Surprise Valley, she called us the other day and says, "There's puncture vine in every place I go check." Well, yeah, because you're taking it from place to place. Trying to get people to understand that is sometimes difficult.
It's transporting it herself.
Yeah, yeah. It's not coincidence.
Yeah. So with your, just, I don't need your presentation, but since Grace is here with our federal partners, we're out in the federal lands a lot. We're family. And I've noticed a lot of, especially in the dispersed areas. I don't know how it's being brought in, but, I mean, it's just overtaking, you know, not large massive acres, but areas where people gather without transport to. And I don't know how or if it's able to be addressed.
So are you talking about like the actual puncture vine that grows on vines? Are you talking about burr buttercup?
Burr buttercup.
Which is just a very small, little, so that's actually technically
What is it called? I call it sand burr. What is it?
Burr buttercup. And it's actually not a noxious weed.
Yeah.
And so that's not one that we necessarily go out and target readily. If it was puncture vine, it is one, and we can. Since we do have our new program at EA, we can target nominated invasives, which makes it so that just recently we can go out and target those. But the noxious weeds will always be our first priority.
Funding dollars are prioritized, unfortunately, that means, yeah, hasn't moved down the list. So there's a lot of overlap in all the programs. I mean, we're doing stuff, dealing with stuff, and we try to, it's not very efficient, can't, another. Do some stuff for the Fish and Wildlife, surveys of annual grasses. There's a little bit of the deuce heads slipping in up there. And then we do some fall deuce head control as part of the Resilient Landscape Project in the north corners. Got a little grant to do some treatments up there around Feet Lake and down the drains and down the creek. And then, like I say, lots of overlap, annual grass, ours, Forest Service, BLM. We're trying to keep ahead of a lot of these species. Really, when you look around the rest of the state, we're pretty well off. Might have something to do with the population density, but if you go north, it's a big problem. And the annual grasses, that's, especially the deuce heads or bent notta, we're talking 30, 40% reduction in carrying capacity for grazing livestock. And that's a big deal. And as rancher, to take 30% off the top, that's, that hurts. And then that comes back down to county, too. I mean, that's lost revenue, taxes, and it's a big deal. And then perpetuating wildfire and all that, yeah. Touched on a lot of these before. Do Fairbooth, education, we go to, like I said, County Weed Management Association. We've been working on securing some steady funding for the counties. Last year, we had House Bill 2043. So we're, as part of the County Weed Management Association, we did some lobbying to try to secure some funding. That failed in committee, of course, like events every, by any, but, but the good side of that was, we didn't get the state funding, but Oregon Garden Development Board dedicated funding to the county programs. And then, so you had to apply, three grant application, but it was just for counties. And we got a $30,000 grant for cost share program for Lake County that we wouldn't have been able to before if we didn't have the county board and county support. So that was a pretty good deal. We're shooting for 50, we got 30, or the plan originally was every county is gonna get 50 to their noxious weed program as a cost share. We have a 30, but we had to back to that funding. Because every county, so we did pretty good. So kind of topped in.
On the cost share, is it dollar for dollar, is that what you do?
Dollar, not quite dollar for dollar. We do, we provide the herb side, they provide the treatment. Treatment tends to be the variable that we can't control. You know, sometimes a guy has 100 acres and we can't control how much it costs to get across that. It might be the hillside, it might be in the valley floor where it's easy to get to. So we're gonna let win or deal with that end of it. It's still variable, we can't predict that. In our cost share program that we set up, the weed board was 10 acre limit. So with the idea that we're trying to get, like, for example, some of the west side people that have smaller properties, and they'll give them an avenue to take care of their specialism problem or whatever.
Well, a lot of times those 10 acres, they don't manage, same as somebody that's raised in Chappell.
Yeah, yeah.
It was probably a good theory.
That was, that was kind of our idea behind it. So we did that 10 acre limit, but then as well, move into July, if you haven't used up those, then go to the big acres. Put through funding that way. Try to do as much good as possible. Say, we did the railroad. This is sitting there, the state line. Picture on the left is California. And picture to the right is Oregon. It is not perfect the right away. But we've been working through it. A lot of landowners were pretty hesitant. They said, this is some Lake County funding stuff, and said, I don't want to be a part of it, but I think we've built up enough reputation of landowners that pretty much everyone's letting us do it now. The hard part is access, you know, trying to get down the railroad is pretty limiting on time.
Have you worked with the new operator any at all?
I have not, no.
Dave has a contact information that is great to work with, so I think we might see a good cooperation there.
And as far as railroad, like, it's not that they have or haven't cooperated, they're just kind of simple to do it. But in the past, they've given us vehicles, better equipment, so we can get down the track faster.
Well, it'll be interesting, and I have followed on that really close, but just in the last few years. So they've got an idea that came over the weekend. Somebody spraying?
I don't have a full update on it, but yeah, they have a contact to spray. Normally, they just do the edges of the rail line. As you can see here, what we have is, from there at the right, it goes out over 40 feet or whatever. And that's that's where either we're approaching on landowners or landowners are approaching on us with the noxious weeds.
And that's been the big part is, you know, they'll get this far off the track, and it'll be clear there, but after that.
Well, to Commissioner Winters' point, getting ahold of David, that's a really good thing. Because they've really been getting off, they're taking care of everything.
That's good.
Yeah, they're doing a great job.
Yeah, yeah, that's been really good. Say, education, we go to State Fair with the Oregon Department of Ag, gives us some face time. Really, I think it really helps us with some of our projects, certain funding, to be honest. Being able to spend some time with them and have that relationship built. Say, equipment loan. The other one we do that takes up a lot of time is biological control release. Picture of the fore later, that's Russian napweed around State Lands in Warner Valley. Don't have the money to control it, so we've been trying to get established, the dolmage is all lost. We work with USDA, AFIS, and ODA to get that biological controls release out there. They provide them at no cost, but we gotta go out and do the research and reporting and monitoring and stuff. Sorry, I'm trying to raise thurken, running out of time, but the other, we did a survey last year up around Christmas Valley with domination tote flags. We don't have a lot of domination tote flags. That was a surprise. This site has been there for a while. Looks like it's pretty happened in desert environments, which is kind of scary. And you can see it here in the foreground. It's spread all throughout there. There's probably 20 acres of it. ODA collected a bunch of stem leavels and gave them to us to release. I think we did 1,500 stem leavels. We had to buy those, it was five bucks a pop. Yeah. And it provides pretty good control, actually.
Because it removes them.
Some of the other species of biological, they're kind of wishy-washy in the back, but the stem level is excellent job. Our EDRR program, this is a leafy spur side we found up above Paisley. Leafy spur is kind of a big scary. It escapes into the forest, that's a pretty big deal. It's tough to get rid of, persists for a long time. Into my presentation, John or Grace, do you have anything to add?
Well, I, I would just, just to highlight a couple of points that Jason made, the, the ability to leverage the county dollars against the grant dollars is, is can be overstated. So very much appreciate that. And also would just highlight that, as you saw, with O D F W has partnered with most productive cooperative weed management area and program coordinator, they're not gonna award, but to the tune of very significant dollars for us. I'm not aware of O D F W contributing those kind of dollar figures to any other weed management area. And we do so because of the program that's run here and how protected it is and how important that truly is in the face of the general treatment that we're doing with the annual grasses and some of these other emerging issues. So I'm really just here to throw as much support behind Jason's program as I, as I can. Thank you very much for continuing to fund it. Thanks, John and Jason, and of course Grace from not only now, but in the past in, in starting the program. That's incredibly valuable, what you have told us today, or at least for me and I'm sure for Commissioner Winter. I personally had no idea how much of an impact it had, I just knew it was the right thing to do. And, you know, these couple of slides explain it very well, so thank you for letting us know that.
Yeah.
Makes it much easier during our budget process to know that that helped leverage $600,000.
Yeah. It is a very big deal, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's important for us, and we can carry that on for our budget spending every year.
And I think one thing I would like to add on that too, is we would love for one of the commissioners to be at our table. I think it's been several years since we've had somebody that's actually showed up to some of our meetings and we are doing an awful lot of work and Jason's doing an awful lot of efforts. And I think, you know, just like you guys said, not knowing a lot of the work that's going on, that Jason's doing a really, really great job. And, you know, I think we would love to have invite someone to sit on our board again.
How, how often do you meet?
Lately, we've been, once a month, we've been trying to get one in. In the past, it's every couple, in the off-season, not so much.
Even if we just had somebody attend our annual meeting, though? We do a big annual meeting here.
Do you get those emails to all three of us and Melanie?
Okay.
In your schedule time? I have quite a bit of passion about the weed, so.
Yeah, it helps to know, but we haven't had anyone there. I know I haven't went, but there's been, you know what happens when you assume?
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, I hate weeds. So, yeah, we've never, yeah, so I, I have my past history of working for the counties on the weed program, so yeah, weed definitely do need to be present.
And if we could continue with the, with the county stuff, it'd be good too. I feel like a lot of you work on the road and stuff.
Well, I, I guess that whenever you do work on that, our money is that we contribute or leverage other dollars, or sometimes grant dollars help pay for some control on county properties.
And we have them, yeah.
Yeah, so when we spend the 21, we're actually receiving quite a bit of help out there on our properties too, so. I don't know what the breakdown is, but it might be, it might be different more than color paint.
Yep, just you guys.
Yeah, there you go. Any other questions, though, do you?
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you guys, very much appreciated.
Thanks, John, Grace for being here.
So...
Same way.
Yes, and Bob said through. So we have a time 11 o'clock, Charlie's in the back, yes, we're gonna take a short break, a very quick break, or whatever, we're gonna be quick. Charlie appeared and Charlie left. I think we've got the timing, we're gonna have to...